Good afternoon and welcome to the May 11th Oklahoma City Planning Commission Meeting. If you are, I shouldn't say if you are, if you have a cellphone pager or similar device, if you would silence those or turn them off, we would appreciate it. If you are not the applicant and you're here to talk to us about a case today, there are sign-up sheets that are on the table outside the chambers, and if you would complete that, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the case that you refer to. We have a number of continuances today that are not on our printed agenda that have occurred within the last 24 hours. I'm going to guess that some of you are here in response to cases which we will consider a continuous request on, so we'll just take those in order as well. So we'll go with the receipt of the minutes of the last April meeting, please?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. Thank you. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Continuances?
All right, we're onto continuance requests. We have several uncontested requests for continuance. On your agenda, item B-25, case PC-10497, will be deferred to May 25. Item B-26 for case PC-10494 has been withdrawn. Case B-27 for C-6888, defer to May 25. Item B-28 for case C-6879, defer to June 8. And B-29 on your agenda for case PC-10492 has been withdrawn.
Did anyone come today to address us on any of the cases just read? Take a motion?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
We also have multiple requests for new continuance requests. Item number two on your agenda, case C-6892, to defer to June 8. Item B-6 for S-PUD-977, to defer to May 25. Item B-10 for S-PUD-967, defer to May 25. Item B-11 for S-PUD-965, defer to May 25. Item B-13, S-PUD-976, has been withdrawn. Item B-14 for PUD-1639, has been withdrawn. Item B-17 for PUD-1638, continued to June 8. Item B-18 for case PC-10493, has been withdrawn. And item B-19 for C-6881, has been withdrawn.
Same question. Anyone come today to address us on any of the cases that were just read?
Aubrey, I'm sorry, will you repeat for me just real quick, quickly, the item?
Agenda item number two, six, 10, 11, 13, 14, 17, 18, and 19. Thank you.
Motion, commissioners? A move for acceptance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to item number 15, which is the Milagro property case, it's just occurred to me as I looked at my, at the panel and looked at the, I have a familial, albeit distant, relationship with Mr. Lowell, and I typically do not participate in hearing his cases. I note secondarily that Mr. Work is center correspondence with respect to this case, which typically Commissioner Powers does not participate in those cases. So I thought it appropriate, before we got deep, 15 people in cases down into the meeting, that I let the people who are here on that case know of these facts so that they can act appropriately versus sitting through the whole of the meeting. Just letting you know.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. The letter you have, we've worked the issues out, so even though there will only be five, I think we're fine with having it today because we've worked out the issue.
All right, just wanted to let everybody know. Thank you.
Is your relation close enough that it would affect your vote one way or the other?
Probably not, but I always have, I've consistently done that, and I think it's probably best if I, due respect to Brent, I don't want to make sure that I don't have any issues with respect to that. It's been worked out, and that should be not an issue.
Anything else from the public before we move on? Okay, we'll go to the consent docket.
Mr. Chairman, just before we move on, I do want those who have come for 1639, I see a number of them who are present, to let you know that it has been withdrawn.
Mr. Roth, name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you. Jim Roth with Phillips Law Firm. You want my home address and my work address?
Home.
All right. 3940 East Wilshire.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Chairman Yocul, thank you Pastor Cooper, and also thank you to Commissioner Powers for the effort to meet with the neighborhood. I'm here on behalf of a number of neighbors that were concerned about the application, and I want to say a word of thanks also publicly to David Box and to Chaney Austin, who had brought forth the application and their desire to withdraw it to respect the neighborhood's desires. So thank you for involving people in the process. I think it was hugely helpful.
Okay. You're welcome. Thanks for coming down.
Consent docket. There are now four items on consent since number two was moved to June 8. Item one is for C-6889, the preliminary plat of Sundance Hangars. Item three is ABC-886. It's a ABC-2 overlay at 12320 Northwest 10th. Item four is PC-10496, which is to change I-2 to I-1 at 1100 South Meridian Avenue. And item five is SP-493 for a special permit to operate a car dealership at 4417 Northwest 39th Street.
Is there anyone here who wants to address us on items 1, 3, 4, or 5 on our consent docket?
Move the consent docket as red.
Microphone.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, items 1, 3, 4, and 5. Cast your votes, and those are approved.
Under items requiring separate vote, item number six was continued. Item seven is S-PUD-978, to rezone 115 North Tuttle Street from R-1 and C-1 to S-PUD-978.
See applicant here. Kenyon, haven't seen you for a while. Welcome.
Good to see you. Thanks.
Give us your name and address, Kenyon, for the record.
Kenyon Morgan, 8700 Oakmont Drive, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Also with us today is Rachel Hernandez, who is the Assistant Executive Director of City Care, who is making this applicant. Larry Bros, the Executive Director, could not make it today. That you want me to start?
Just tell us what you've got planned here, if you would, please.
Well, City Care, as you know, has Pershing Center, and then they've developed several properties, a lot of single-family homes in that West Lawn District. They've literally turned that district around. They have applied for a $1 million grant and have been told they will receive it from the State Housing Finance Authority and State Trust Funds, and this will be to do some re-merge housing. And this is literally for housing for women with children who otherwise would be in prison. And so they have a whole program of training and going through steps of getting back into a productive lifestyle. And so what we have proposed here is three duplexes on three and a half lots, and you can see those on the top right of the side here, and I think there's some pictures of that also in this, and so we're trying to blend this into the neighborhood style. Also, it's been the, you can go down a little bit further, all of these will be three-bedroom houses. If you keep on going, there's the, there's the houses in the background. Larry's had, City Care has owned a lot of this land for many years, and this particular plot that you see in front is part of this plat. It will be used as a neighborhood park. And then there's another part of the development that will actually be used. Larry's had a, well, this is the, this is closer up of the re-merge housing. We've grouped these around not only to face the street and make a good presentation to the street, but also we've grouped around where the kids can come out and play in a playground that is somewhat defensible. So if there's a case of someone coming in and who, you know, who wants to cause trouble, they can keep them by. This is, this is the front view, and you see to the left the playground, and then you go around the back, and you can see this enclosed area where the kids can play. But also Larry's had a dream for years of having a laundromat in this area, and so as part of this application, we are also getting zoning, and this is not funded right now. He's hoping to, he just works and works to get all kinds of funding, but we're hoping to create sort of a neighborhood shopping area there that would have a laundromat and have a, you know, a store and a cafe and maybe even bring in, he's also doing some veterans' housing in the area, which is single-family housing, so that doesn't require any rezoning, but he's, he's also, he's, he has a dream of having a veterans' cafe there, sort of a gathering spot for veterans and so forth. So this is a plan to start construction hopefully this summer in the re-merge housing part, and then, and then as a way to sort of start fulfilling his next dream, which is the laundromat and the veterans' cafe.
Thank you. No one has signed up. Commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions. I really admire the project. I admire the improvement of the area where it's going to be located. I'm very familiar with that because I go down, for years, we're down in general Pershing and just close my eyes. Well, now it's not. And it's really, a really good project for a good purpose, and I wholeheartedly support it, and I move approval of this application.
I second the approval, the motion with joy.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
Five feet is not a very long way for dumpsters to be located away from adjacent residential property. Isn't there someplace else we could put them and get them a little further away?
Not really. I mean, we looked at that very closely, but it's just, you know, it's a tight site, and we wanted to, we had to get, we wanted to get onsite parking. There is some offsite parking, but just to get the amount of parking spaces, get the cars off the street and so forth, it just, it just made the most sense. So, you know, there's a, it's just like you, if you, you know, if you started off with a brand-new development, you would obviously not, not put it there, but you're trying to work this in. This is the top, on the left side here, it's, it's in the top here, it will be screened, and it, it, it will be a screen fence between the two, and so that's, that's where we made the most sense to put it.
And then I wanted to ask you, your parking, how, how does the parking that you are providing compare to the city's standard requirements?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that. I think, I didn't really make that comparison. We just tried to maximize the parking onsite, so I'm not sure.
How far off our parking requirement are we here?
If they're not right on, they're very close.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Item number eight is S-PUD-956, to rezone 1629 Northwest 16th Street from R-1 and Gatewood-Oberon Conservation Overlay District to S-PUD-956.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Sam Gresham, who's the architect for this project. This is a spud that is in the Plaza District, and it's one that, I believe, was on the docket perhaps a month ago. It was continued for a few reasons. One main reason was to allow the opportunity for my client and Sam to sit down with the neighbors to address any concerns they might have. That meeting has happened. I know one of the main concerns that came from that meeting is, when you looked at our spud, one of the uses allowed by right in the spud was the bar, that being drinking establishments sit-down alcohol permitted. We've visited with our client, and we're willing today to strike that use, so we could add that as a TE. So by doing that, if you look at the character of the NB zoning district, which is to our west and to our south, what you have is, under NB, you have 40 uses permitted by right, all the restaurant uses, all the retail uses, 40 uses. What we have now, once we've taken our bar use out, is only 12 uses. So we are much less impactful when it comes to what could be done onsite. We are maintaining the historic setbacks along 16th within the Plaza District. One of the questions raised by a planning commission member was hours of operation due to the location of our site next to residential. If you look at the screen, what you'll see is everywhere that's NB are allowed those 40 uses by right. And what you have are a series of retail, a lot of restaurants, a lot of restaurant-slash-bar uses that have backyards that share a fence line or a property line with R2 development. It's an identical scenario that our site has. It's a site that would be on the corner of 16th and Blackwelder that would have the R2 behind it in an identical fashion that the rest of the Plaza District has. But in looking at the hours of operation, we did a quick, quick study of the Plaza District website and other operators' websites, and what we found was you have, I believe, six different restaurants. And the hours of operation that I'm going to give you are the hours that they list on their website. So Empire Slice House on the website has Monday through Saturday open until 2:00 a.m. The Mule, Monday through Saturday, is listed as late, which I take to mean that, you know, they stay open as long as there's people that are wanting to be served. Okinor is midnight, Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, 2:00 a.m. The Wine Bar is 11:00 p.m., Tuesday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, 2:00 a.m. Saints Public House, all seven days, they're open until 2:00 a.m. And finally, a, I don't know how to pronounce it, but a ramen noodle restaurant is open until midnight, Monday through Saturday, and Sunday, 10:00 p.m. The reason I go through all that is to show what we're asking for, that being a restaurant use, and the other uses listed in our application, is consistent with the area. This is what this area has become. That's why it's thriving. That's why it's a very desirable place for, for young people, for young families, to want to move into this, this really neat urban setting off of classing. So we believe what we have is an application that is certainly consistent with the comp plan. It's certainly consistent with the rest of the Plaza District, except we have less things allowed by right than our neighbors. But we did, we did have the opportunity to meet. I hope that it was a productive meeting. We'd like for your approval and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Before we go any further, Janice Kelly Work has signed up to speak on this case, which I did not realize when we began. Oh, 16, I'm sorry, never mind. It came out in a different order.
That was a surprise to me, but.
Yeah. A real surprise to Kelly. I'd like to keep him on his toes.
That's good.
Well, that's all for the best, because I do have some things I want to say about this application.
I saw you busily writing over there, so.
And I cannot support this application without some controls on the hours of operation. I went and looked at each of the businesses that are on Mr. Box's list, and, you know, with respect to those that are actually open until 2:00 a.m. or have the ability to stay open until 2:00 a.m., I guess I would say the following. You know, the area along the plaza that was existing commercial use was in terrible condition. It needed rehabilitation. The city put, you know, some, a lot of time and energy and effort into doing things to redevelop it and encourage private redevelopment of it, and that's a great thing. But I think we have to be careful about seeing the impacts of that bleeding over into the existing residential areas. Gatewood to the north has a UCD in place, and there are a number of provisions that this is at odds with. But specifically, the small, one-story, you know, commercial structures that front onto the plaza that may or may not stay open until 2:00 a.m. but may have that capability, you know, to me, they're different. And to take two properties that are existing residential properties and convert them to a commercial use, and to use that for a business that we're saying is not a drinking establishment, but it's going to stay open until 2:00 a.m. seven nights a week, I cannot support that. I also don't think it's an appropriate location for a liquor store. I don't think that it, that it should have unbridled retail. I think there probably needs to be some additions upon the wide-open retail use there. The Personal Services General talks about high-volume traffic to the site. I mean, there's no parking here. It's a tight corner. It backs up to residential. There is existing and established residential use directly across the alleyway, you know, 10-foot alleyway to the north. There's an existing home next door to the east. And as I looked at these properties that are on his list of ones that stay open, they're just not in the same category as what it is that they're proposing to do here. Don't necessarily have a problem with them actually converting it for restaurant use, but I can't, I can't support it staying open seven nights a week until 2:00 a.m.
If I may respond, while I, I respect her position, I mean, I, I can't agree with it. And if you look at the map, frankly, the map doesn't agree with it either. We're in the exact same position as the NB sites. They have the residential immediately behind it, just as we will, both on the north side of 16th and on the south side of 16th. So to decide that this is the one place that we really need a restriction on hours, frankly, there's no basis for it. It would be putting my client's property at a significant disadvantage. I mean, if he's going to lease a space to a restaurant operator, why would the restaurant operator ever want to lease this space when he can go across the street and lease it with no restrictions? Now, if we were in a very unique piece of property that had a different, you know, environment than the rest of the NB that you see on the map, I'd understand that. But we're in the same position, so to impose a restriction when there's not a condition that is any different than the rest, it strikes me as, it's just unfair and kind of arbitrary. To the east of us is vacant, so again, to the north is R2, just like to the north of the rest of the NB, and then to the south of the NB on the south side of 16th. So what I would submit is, if it is different, I think we have curtailed that in the number of uses that are allowed by striking some 28 uses that the guy across the street can do. Liquor stores will strike it. So we can strike the bar, we can strike the liquor store. So what you're left with is some retail, likely, and the ability to have a restaurant, a restaurant just like everyone else within this district.
We've got two people who want to sign up or who have signed up to speak. Kayla Lewis is first. If you would pull the microphone down and give us your name and address, please.
Kayla Lewis, 1125 North McKinley.
Thank you.
This property lies just outside of what is Plaza District's Urban Design Code, but it's directly across the street, so is very, very near to the plaza. And we appreciate the bar use being taken out, by the way. But on behalf, on behalf of the Plaza District Association, we would like to make sure that the building setbacks are set in a way that will allow for parking to be added later on, on both streets from 16th and Blackwelder. And I believe minimal setbacks are included, and if not, this kind of sets a precedence for future developments along that strip. Parking is an, is an issue in the plaza, as we all are aware, and I think that this would set a precedence and possibly create more problems for the district and the neighborhoods surrounding, and our major concern would be the lack of parking or potential lack of parking.
So you're not opposed to the proposal, but you want to see an allowance for parking?
Right.
Is that basically your issue?
Yes.
In the setback, also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct.
Mr. Struble.
And we'll need your name and address, Jeff, for the record, please. Jeff Struble, 1916 Northwest 18th Street. And I was, I'm on the Gatewood Board. Sam did come talk to the neighborhood, but I guess there was a problem with the mail-out, so nobody knew what was going on at the time. We would, really would like to see an extension on this so that we could meet with the developer and talk about some of our concerns. The bar was one big one, but also the size of the building was something we were concerned with, a 7,000-square-foot lot with a 7,000-square-foot building. You know, because parking is an issue down there. I think that the setbacks that the plaza is interested in is real important also. And also, I'm representing also Classen 10 Pen. I think Jessica sent in a letter also on that, and I'm kind of talking for both neighborhoods, and both neighborhoods are against this spud, how it's written, and we would like to see a continuance so that we could talk with the developer. They just came and kind of said what they're doing, and nobody really knew what was going on at the time. So that, oh, I have anybody else?
Any questions of Mr. Struble, commissioners? Thank you.
Briefly, the meeting was had, and I'm not sure what a continuance gets us. To the, to the concern about parking, we are willing to do on-street parking. That's in our plan. We're fine with, with doing that and working with Plaza. That's what this district is. I mean, it, there are no parking lots for all these buildings. Frankly, that's why it's a neat urban district. You don't have big surface parking lots next to the buildings. So it's, what we have planned is consistent with the rest of the area. The 7,000-foot building, the footprint's only 4,400 square feet. So what is planned is two-story, so it's not 7,000-square-foot footprint on a 7,000-square-foot lot. And our intent is to maintain the historic setback of the rest of the Plaza District. But Mr. Struble, I believe, was at the meeting, and in all fairness, he owns several of the buildings that house the restaurants that have no limits of hours on their operation. And so it's hard for us to see why we should be treated any differently than the buildings that Mr. Struble owns. We think that that's, what is, the district is, is what we're asking for. So we would ask for your approval, is having an application consistent with the rest of the district.
Just a question. On the north side that goes back toward the, looks like you've got parking spaces on the north side, about five or six slots, it looks like?
Right.
What's the screening that's proposed? I couldn't tell. It just says five-foot buffer on the east, but it doesn't speak to screening from that north portion of the lot.
I'm going to let Sam Gresham address that.
Okay. Thanks.
Sam Gresham, 400 Northwest 23rd Street. The screening to the parking, is that what you're referring to?
Well, the screening between the parking itself and then the.
Alley?
The houses on the north side. I see on, on our staff report, there's a, shows five parking spaces and then.
The access is for the alley.
The north property line, and then there's a gap, I guess, between the spaces, and so you can't, there's no screening proposed there.
No screening, no. The alley serves as the maneuvering space for, the access to the parking.
Oh. So they back your property, back across your property line into the alley and exit that way? Is that right? As an example?
I'm sorry. Pardon me.
They would back or drive out of your parking lot, your five spaces, across your property line into this, into this alleyway to exit the property.
That's right. Yes.
So there's no proposed screening between your building, your parking, and the north residential? Because you can't. You don't have room.
That's right, no. And it's multifamily on that side.
Well, I, I don't think that multifamily deserves less screening than single-family, but just as a reference. Okay, thanks.
Do we issue other, other comments?
Comment, and I respect Janice's, your comments about this particular project, but, but just down the street to the east is a giant building with retail and all sorts of stuff in it, and the creeping expansion of the Plaza District continues on. I mean, it just, it is what it is. Very crowded, parking's a problem, but with the deletion of alcoholic beverage retail sales and drinking establishment sit-down alcohol permitted of this application, and a request that the hours of. of this application, and a request that the hours of operation, Sunday through Thursday, be limited to 11 o'clock. You can have 2:00 in the morning on Sa, Friday and Saturday. And, and, and really, I think I really mean that, uh, that, that it just needs to be toned down some, but if you agree to those conditions, I don't oppose this. I think it's, I think it's okay.
Well, I'm balancing your comments with Janice's, and the parking, at least as provided by the developer, enters and uses the alley immediately adjacent to residential uses. Now, people coming and going at 1:00 and 2:00 AM in the morning, either three days a week or seven days a week, and I'm, I live immediately adjacent to that, uh, I have a, a real problem with that.
We can delete that parking. I mean, since we're doing the on-street parking, we, we can delete that. I mean, that, that's not a, a concern of ours. We were doing it as, uh, you know, as a gesture because of the parking discussion. But there are no independent buildings that have their own parking lot. Our hope is that we can have the on-street parking, that'll satisfy, but if the concern is parking and to Hensley, Mr. Hensley's point, adjacent to that, that residential north of us, we'd be happy to, to delete those parking stalls, um, that are on the north side. And we're trying to get an answer on the hour's limitation.
Well, either way, I'm not going to go for the 2:00 AM at that location. Just me.
Can we put this to the heel of the docket? Our client's not here.
Pardon me?
Can we put this to the heel of the docket so we can get an answer from our client?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, we'll put item eight to the heel of the docket, and we'll go on to item nine.
Item nine is S.P.U.D. 975 to rezone 4520 Old Farm Road from S.P.U.D. 659 to S.P.U.D. 975.
Applicant here? Your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm, uh, Terry Scrivener, 1501 South Locust Lane, Mustang.
Just tell us quickly what you're doing.
Uh, what we're doing is we're wanting to do an 11,000-foot add-on to the existing facility. The, uh, current property owners, when they bought the property in 2012, uh, rezoned it so that they could have beer sales on-site. When they did that, they didn't specify in a new S.P.U.D., uh, site, uh, a lot of the site information as far as building height, uh, setbacks, and, uh, exterior wall covering. So when they didn't specify, reverted back to a standard, and what we'd like to do now is, since we're going to add on to the existing and maintain the same size, uh, building width and setbacks, we would just like to re, uh, have a rezone so that what we're wanting, uh, to add on to will meet with what's there existing right now.
Is the add-on to the south that goes to, down to 119th Street, is that what I'm looking at?
Yes, sir.
And how close is that to the houses that are there?
Uh, the closest houses will be in the bottom-left-hand corner of the, the red area, the, uh, is a gated neighborhood to the west, and we have a site access, I'm sorry, a cross-access agreement with them for fire department access. The next nearest one will be, uh, across the fence and then on the other side of Northwest 119th Street, and, uh, I believe those are, would be the next nearest ones.
Okay, thank you.
How, how large is the existing facility?
Ma'am?
How large is the existing facility?
The, the new building?
Existing.
Existing facility.
Existing, uh, property?
The building.
The building.
The building.
The building, uh, I believe it's right around 11,000 feet, 11, I'm sorry, that's wrong. The building that we're adding on to is, uh, approximately 11,000 feet. We're adding another 11,000 feet on to that.
So you're doubling the size of the facility?
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're indoor soccer arenas.
I know what they are. Um, and you're not going to take any access on to 119th even though you go all that, that far down? There's no man to take access on to 119?
No, ma'am. No, that's why the fire marshal wanted us to, for fire department access only, we have a cross-access agreement with the property owners, uh, the Neighborhood Association to the west. That way, we'll have a, a gate with a Knox box that only the fire department can have access. So the only time there would be anybody going through there would be if the fire department's there for emergency reasons. There's no access going to be going through to 119th Street.
So I'm sorry, where is your emergency access?
Southwest corner, it looks like.
You, you can see it on that picture there, the northwest corner of the proposed building, it's strict, straight to the west of that. That is the access, and that will have, uh, a gate across.
Northwest corner, right into the parking lot, in other words?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the northwest corner, no, the northwest corner of the proposed building?
Okay.
Uh, straight west of that, that is the access going into the, the cul-de-sac, uh, the, uh, property to the west.
I do have a question of staff. On page nine of the staff report under traffic, there's the statement that no uses are changing and traffic is not expected to substantially increase, and I'm a little bit curious about that since they're doubling the size of the facility.
Well, we, they recently added, if you'll see the area where it sits tennis courts, they recently took those out and they added 96 more parking spaces, so that freed up more, uh, parking and, and, uh, as far as the traffic, the, even though that's a large building, it's only going to effectively have like two teams at one time in it, so the number of people that are going to be coming just for that added, that added square foot is not going to be that great.
Okay.
So the op, the occupancy load isn't going to be, isn't going to be increasing in large amounts, is what I'm saying.
No one signed up. Move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
All right, thank you.
Items 10 and 11 were continued. Item 12 is S.P.U.D. 974 to rezone 612 North Rockwell Avenue from S.P.U.D. 814 to S.P.U.D. 974.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Um, application before you is a spud that would allow us to have some EMD signs. Um, my client was unaware that he wasn't allowed EMD signs when he zoned this the first time. Um, that's, that's what we'd like. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have a comment.
Why don't you just make a motion?
I agree, what?
Why don't you just make a motion?
Can I talk about it?
No, just make the motion.
Based upon the staff's recommendation, I move to deny this application.
We have a motion and a second to deny item 12. Cast your votes. It is denied.
Item 13 and 14 were withdrawn. Item 15 is S.P.U.D. 937 to rezone 5,700 Northwest Thirty, 130th Street from P.U.D. 964 to P.U.D.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant who is also with us, Mr. Brent Lowell, and the civil engineer, Mark Grubbs, uh, this is a spud that is in the middle of an office complex. We filed this application, uh, many, many months ago, and, uh, Mr. Work, uh, represents the neighbors, and so we spent a lot of time, uh, not only meeting in person, but then Mr. Work and I went back and forth, uh, multiple times on revisions to the S.P.U.D. to make sure that what we had was something that, uh, worked with my client, but also that his, his clients and the neighbors were protected and, and satisfied with what we were going to have. And so, um, we've now arrived at that, that point. You should have a letter in your packet that, uh, Mr. Work withdrew his protest. So now we have an, an S.P.U.D. that is our understanding is, is workable for everybody. If you look at this area, um, when you drive 130th Street, what you see is there is a clear line of demarcation between the office and the residential. It's a gated community, and so in our opinion, the, um, yeah, there we go. The, the, the west side or, you know, outside of that gate, it's clearly, uh, has the feel of an office complex, and that's what we seek to do as part of the things that we agreed to. We want to keep the theme and the quality development that's already in P.U.D. 947 in place, and so we have agreed to some architectural restrictions that would ensure that it's a compatible and consistent development. So with that, we would ask for, uh, your approval. Um, be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, no one signed up.
I do need to address the TEs. Um, one, we are fine with, uh, three, we are fine with, uh, two, we can't agree to. Um, rather, the, um, the protesters and us agree to a specific square footage. Uh, that's incorporated in the revised spud, so we would ask that, uh, we keep the agreement in place that we reach with the neighbors rather than a maximum number of buildings. So I'd ask for a deletion of, uh, TE number two.
So what is the square foot limitation?
Except for number two, TEs, they've agreed to them, is that right?
Yeah, but wait a minute. I want that to replace TE number two. Okay, well, the replacement of TE two, or the revision of TE two to reflect 16,250 square feet of covered heated space.
And it's, the, the staff, it's already been revised in the document, so that'll be just fine.
We'll be consistent. Any discussion, commissioners? Action? Move for adoption?
Second.
With the revised TE two?
With the revisal of TE two to, uh, reflect 16,250 square feet.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes, and that's approved with, um, Ward one not voting up there. Oh, Ward two also?
Yes.
Okay, wards one and two?
Item 16 is C. 6885, the final plat of Whistle Creek. This does require a variance to the subdivision regulations.
Brian Coon represents applicant 2832 West Wisher. Uh, probably need Mr. Hensley to come back because I need six votes for my variance, so, um, unless you want me to start talking without him. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, um, this property, uh, preliminary plat was approved about maybe a year ago, was delayed for, I don't know which sounds worse, was delayed for 27 months or delayed for two years and three months, uh, because of some protests. The, uh, one of the issues they brought up was, one, was, uh, the drainage, um, where we were under contract or are under contract to do a drainage study of Chisholm Creek, which is the creek that is shown about, uh, quarter of a mile, almost a half a mile to the west. At the time that study was under, was ongoing, it has still not been accepted by the city of Oklahoma City, but it is, but they have it. It's in its final form, it just needs to go to council now. At the, at the planning commission meeting for the preliminary plat, when it was finally heard and approved, uh, staff from stormwater came in and told you that this does not adversely affect, or that the study will not adversely affect or have any effect on this project. And at that point, you chose to let us move forward with the preliminary plat approval, which we did. This is phase one, final plat, which matches the preliminary plat, um, and one of the things I like when staff puts these comments, because then I can just quote them, this final plat conforms to the subdivision regulations and the approved preliminary plat. There are five TEs, uh, we agree with all of them. TE number three, I need a variance on. Uh, we have a street that comes down called Whistle Creek Boulevard, it turns to the east at Northwest 167th, and then stops there for phase one. Phase two plans are on the board right now to be turned in within the next three to four weeks. We plan on building this all-in-one phase, um, but this came to you as a separate plat, so that's all that you can hear today, so, but you will see phase two soon. So I am requesting a variance on that. Um, it's really not a cul-de-sac, it does have a bulb at the end of it, but staff, uh, considered that to be a cul-de-sac, so we do need that variance. I'm not sure how many lots it is, but it's because of the length of the street. So with that, I know that there's, you have protest letters from some people to the east. You also have protest letters from the people, or from the, uh, homeowners association to the south, Brenton Hills. Both of those properties are uphill from us. Our water will drain downhill to the north, it will not drain to Brenton Hills, and it will not drain to the neighbor to the east. It does drain into a creek, which is a tributary of Chisholm Creek, into Chisholm Creek ultimately. They have had some issues at 164th, uh, that box is not big enough. However, we are not going to adversely affect that, and we are working with staff, your staff and engineering to solve that, or to work with that. So, uh, we know the situation very well, um, but again, we were just to ask for approval. Um, it meets the preliminary plat, it meets all subdivision regulations, we'd like not to be delayed anymore. We have been for two or three months so far on this one just because of variance request, so be glad to answer your questions.
Okay. Any questions before we hear from Mr. Work?
I'm sorry, Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Um, as you look at this particular plat, I see you're dividing it into two sections, that...
Yes.
The first section and second section.
Yes.
Um, knowing then that there's a problem on 164th, you said the box is not big enough?
Box is undersized, right.
Okay, so what impact will the, will your neighborhood have on that particular?
Um, just as any other neighborhood upstream, it will increase the water to that location. Uh, however, we have done the study to prove that our water will be through that box. There's a thing called peak, when you, when you study stormwater. Our water peak, at our peak will be before the peak of the, of the entire basin gets there. So we don't feel like it will adversely affect the box at 164th at this time. And we're going to, you know, we have to have finished floor elevations set for all the houses in our subdivision, uh, but again, uh, the protests you're going to hear from is all upstream from us, so it does not affect them at all. Uh, if there's any effect at all, there's some property to the north of this that they're putting a lot of fill on right now, which probably has more effect than anything, but, uh, we don't plan on bringing any fill to our site at all, and, uh, we're going to walk, we're going to have to walk through all those calculations with staff, and we already have
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, excuse me, members of the commission. Uh, my name is Kelly Work, and my address is 105 North Hudson Suite 304, and I am here representing Carolyn Gresham-Fiegel and Bob Fiegel, and also the Brenton Hills Homeowners Association. Uh, I do have an exhibit that I'd like to, uh, pass around that is, um, a slightly different version of what you see on your screen right now because it's, has the subject property highlighted, so I'd just like to provide that to you at this time. Cindy, if you could, could you put the, the subject site map up, please? Thank you. The, um, you move that, move it up just a little. Are you, yeah, that's great. Will it go up more? Just want us to be able to show the full property. That's great. Yeah, maybe down a little bit. Thank you. The, um, I just wanted to get located where my client's properties are. The, uh, Fiegel, uh, Gresham-Fiegel, uh, property is immediately to the east of the subject property, and, uh, the, uh, Carolyn Gresham-Fiegel and Bob Fiegel's son, uh, also lives in a house that is just to the north of theirs, that is also east of the subject property. And then the Brenton Hills Homeowners Association there you see to the south of the, of this proposed development. Brenton Hills consists of, um, 250 homes. It is there between 150th and 164th Street and between Western and Santa Fe. The, um, there are two creeks that, um, that are, um, that run through this area. One of them that runs directly through the subject property is a tributary of Chisholm Creek. Chisholm Creek, there you see on the west of Brenton Hills, uh, it flows to the north there and then crosses 100 and, under 164th Street and extends on to the north. And, uh, probably about a quarter mile north of 164th Street, this tributary that runs through the subject property then connects with Chisholm Creek, uh, and they, and then continues on north. Uh, so we're, um... So we're, our immediate concern relates to the, to this tributary that flows into Chisholm Creek, and I noticed on an exhibit that Public Works had prepared, that they are referring to it as Tributary Six of Chisholm Creek. So that's the one that is, that runs across the, my client's property, the Gresham Fiegles, and then the Chisholm Creek is on the west side of the Brenton Hills neighborhood. Now, what you have before you today, as Mr. Coon identified, is a final plat for a portion of this property that was before you last year, early last year, with a preliminary plat. That preliminary plat was approved over our objections, we appeared and objected, and at that time, principally what we were requesting, and, and what the planning commission had previously continued that case on a number, over a number of meetings, was there, was awaiting the final presentation of the Chisholm Creek drainage study. And that has been completed, we're told, but it has not yet been presented to the city council. Now, following the approval of the preliminary plat last year, we did file an appeal of that approval to the Oklahoma County District Court, and that is, as provided by Oklahoma statutes, any action by the commission is subject to review by the state district court. It is an appeal that is on the record. That appeal was filed, timely filed, last year, and that case is still pending. In our view, because there is no final decision on the preliminary plat, that it is premature for there to be a decision on a final plat, which is what is now being requested by the applicant. It is entirely possible that the district court will reverse the planning commission's decision on the approval of the preliminary plat. That's to be determined, and the Oklahoma City subdivision regulations require that before a final plat is presented, that there must be an approved preliminary plat for major subdivisions, of which this is defined to be one. It's any development that is 11 lots or more. So our contention is, is that the decision on the final plat should await a final decision from the district court on the preliminary plat. Our concerns, as we've expressed when the preliminary plat was before the commission, really relate to drainage and the stormwater runoff, and there is, we are concerned about the increase in stormwater runoff that will result from additional development of this area. And now, Cindy, if you could put that, that drainage, that flooding exhibit up. What I've passed out to you, and what Cindy has now put on the, on the board, this is a, this is a document that was prepared by the Oklahoma City Public Works Department that just shows the structures that were flooded in the two storms, the first, June 14th of 2010, and then in 2011. The ones that are depicted in red were the structures that were flooded in the 2010 storm, and then the ones in green, there was residents there that, on 164th Street that was flooded, that actually is on the subject property in the storm that occurred in 2011. And of course, it was these storms that, that were a significant factor in the city council's determination to commission the drainage study for the Chisholm Creek Drainage Basin. And although we understand this tributary, as Mr. Coon has mentioned, is not Chisholm Creek, it is a tributary to Chisholm Creek, and there was flooding, as you see reflected on this exhibit, along this tributary. The channel, the box under 164th Street, for both this tributary and for Chisholm Creek are inadequate to handle the amount of stormwater runoff that occurs in, in a really not very significant rainfall. Northwest 164th Street is regularly flooded during heavy rains, and what happens is that the water backs up there at those boxes, and it creates a lake effect. So it, it does affect these properties, because it does not allow the water to continue on to the north under 164th Street, gets slowed significantly because of the inadequacy of the existing drainage structures at 164th Street. So although the drainage study, as Mr. Coon mentioned, has been completed, for some reason, it has not yet been presented to the city council. And that, of course, was the same situation when we were here in January of 2016 on the preliminary plat, and we don't know the reason for that, but what we had been told by Public Works and by the municipal councilor's office was that until the drainage study is presented to the city council, that it's not considered a public record, and therefore is not available to be provided to us as members of the public. So we requested the study when we first learned about it back in probably 2013, and, and it was not completed at that time, but it was completed before the preliminary plat was finally considered by the planning commission. But it, for some reason, it's not yet been presented to the city council, and has not been made available to members of the public, which is what we were requesting, so that we could review it. We had our own engineer that had been retained for that purpose. We still have not had that opportunity to do that. So we don't think that this area is able to handle more development until these issues have been identified. As I understand it, the next step would be, once the drainage study is presented and approved by the city council, would be to identify what drainage improvements are needed for this area as a result of the findings of the drainage study. That has not yet happened, because the study has not yet been presented to the city council. Today, there are drainage improvements that are needed in this area to address the risk of flooding, and we don't think that the commission should allow the situation to be made worse by approving this final plat and allowing additional development along this creek before the study is released and before a plan for those additional improvements is made. So for those reasons, we ask that you deny this final plat. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
We have a gentleman from Public Works here. Blaine, if you could share the status with us that...
Blaine Sheffield, Public Works.
Share with us the, the status of the drainage study and how it is or isn't applied now.
Well, the status is, our department, drainage is, we've, we've approved the study. It just has to be taken before city council to get, I guess, formal approval, or signatured by the council for formal approval. Like Brian said, it is on, the study was on the main creek, Chisholm Creek, it was on the main channel. The study did not take into account Tributary Six. What Brian will have to do, they'll have to do the study on Tributary Six, and they'll have to use the information from the study where the tributary ties into Chisholm Creek. They'll have to use the water surface elevations out of the study, and then run their study back up to Trib Six to see what impacts there will be. Well, it'll show what's there now, and then after they do the development, that's what their study will show.
And they have to do that before they can get building permits and so forth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? About... Yeah, I've got questions. Mike first.
No, go ahead.
No, you're first.
I'm sure you're going to ask them. Go ahead.
Well, it's, it's confusing that you've approved the study, it's right there, and you're not going to tell anybody until you tell council. And we have an application here with, with, you know, potentially serious issues going from Whistle Creek to Chisholm Creek, et cetera, and one's a tributary, one's not. And our, and our job is to make a decision based upon something that you have in your hands, but you're not going to tell us what you think the impact of this development would be on what goes on with flooding on Chisholm Creek. Another question is, is the Public Works, do you advocate detention ponds on each lot? Do you ever think about that?
Not on each pond. It would be just one big pond for the entire subdivision. It wouldn't be on each individual lot.
But wouldn't, but wouldn't a detention area on each lot mitigate runoffs from the development that's being proposed? Would, you know, you're just not going to go, and I think this is going downhill towards the north, is that right?
Yes, sir.
That's where it goes. Those are my comments.
He's saying there would, Blaine is saying there would be one large detention pond, not one in each lot, but...
Not individuals, not individuals, no.
Not everybody, it's a little lake in their backyard. Okay. Mike, go ahead.
Just procedurally, we've already approved the preliminary plat, right? This is a final. If we, if the preliminary is overturned, then the final, I'm asking, is not valid either, is that right? Dan?
I would assume if you approve the final plat, Mr. Work will amend his petition to include the final plat as appeal.
That, that would be my assumption additionally, is that, you know, I don't, I don't know why we need to keep this. These guys are, Kelly, do you expect you're having a separate dispute in the district court? So as far as I'm concerned, from a land use standpoint, I mean, there's maybe some drainage problems. Interestingly, I find the most disconcerting fact of this conversation, that the study is, it doesn't seem to be addressing this particular area. So to wait for a study, it's not going to tell me anything necessarily about this particular tributary, seems, one, that we did frankly, a half-baked study, because it didn't include all the areas that are relevant to the problem, not you, Brian, but whoever did the study. I'm like, really? You left out that? But that's a second, that's a secondary comment that I'll just make anecdotally. So, I mean, but I don't see any reason to hold this up, have it sit here while we wait for the district court proceedings, they can wind their way through as they see parties to those proceedings see fit. So...
May I address that?
Any other questions? I'll make a motion.
I do have, I do have another observation, and that's what we're going to vote on for the variance, is the length of a cul-de-sac, and it's really a comment, I think, to the planning department about traffic calming. And if you look at the, from the entranceway on 164th Street, and you go south, it's a big, long, giant stretch that comes down that could be really problematic with speeding cars, et cetera, and, you know, are there speed bumps provided? Are there stop signs? Are there whatever, the traffic calming procedures that we've talked about could be implemented with this particular final plat? It's a, it's a long haul straight down.
And if I could address that. CAB, as you see there, common area B is all flood zone. I'd love to put some curves in there, but I can't. CAA, the other flood zone on the other side of the street, again, we can't do anything other than windows except for common area, so I can't put a street there. As you can see that creek, it goes, well, it looks pretty much like it shows on that map, so I can't, I'd love to have more curves, but I can't. Fire department doesn't allow us to put in speed bumps on the streets, they don't like those.
Yeah.
So, you know...
Can, can we put stop signs on 162nd?
I'm sure there would be at that intersection, sure, and we may have to either go through traffic commission to do that, or it could be a TE. That'd probably be the easiest one, that's fine. I don't have a problem with putting a three-way stop at Northwest 167 Whistle Creek. That's fine. Another thing I might address, just, just so you know, we are, as far as our office, we're kind of at a disadvantage in this industry, because I know what that study says, so I have to use it ethically. There's no other engineer in here that knows what that study says, so they can move forward with the current data. Okay? So I know what that study says, and I'm not going to design something that would be adverse to what that study tells me. So I think you've got that advantage that we did the study. Now, Mr. Hensley, one of the things about this, that basin, Chisholm Creek basin starts at Whistler in May, okay? And there's no, the cost of doing a study for the Chisholm Creek basin, including all the tributaries, because this is Trib Six, and it's huge. So unless you wanted to stop all development from 164th to the south to Whistler right now, all of those affect this, I'm just saying that. I'm not asking you to do that in any way, but I'm just saying, we completely understand what that study says. I've been asked to present it to council at the time, so I know it really well, we've had it, it's on my desk, probably three feet from my chair. So we're going to, we are designing based on what that study tells us, because we have to, professionally, we have to. I think one of the biggest issues, you heard this early on, was it was a density issue with the neighbors, too. They didn't like the density. Brenton Hills wanted us to not have that street go through, and as you can see, our lots on the south boundary are bigger than the rest of our lots to meet the subdivision regs, making them as 75% the size. But you all wanted that road open. We were willing to keep it closed, but you all wanted it open, and we did that. So I think it's a density issue, but the density, as Mr. Gale said a long time ago with the case, density was happening a long time ago when the zoning changed. So again, TE number one, all engineering division requirements must be met. You know, normally, this is, like you said, this is land use, this layout of the lots, stop signs, these are, but we've got engineers, though, I've got to please, before we even going to do dirt work. So it's a long way prior to building permit. So, and the green dot on there is actually, that was on the other map that flooded, that's actually owned by my client, it's on this property, so that's going to go away.
I know it's a real struggle for me to base a decision on a study that we don't know anything about. It is concerning for me, though, that we continue to develop in this area, knowing that there are problems with flooding on 164th. And, and yet, I don't think we really have, if you're willing to agree to an additional TE for stop signs at 162nd...
Yes, sir.
I would move for adoption or approval.
Lee, all we can do, we can't approve stop signs at the planning commission, the traffic commission has to do that. You could have a TE wherein the applicant agrees to apply for...
Okay.
But we can't grant them.
If you're willing to accept...
I'll be willing to accept that we will, we will pursue stop signs at that corner. Sometimes traffic in the plan, in our approval of plans, they'll put where those signs have to go, so if they do, we're fine. We're okay with signs there, and if traffic, staff doesn't approve them in our approval of our plans, we will go to traffic commission and get those.
We'll, we'll, you're willing to pursue and apply?
We'll pursue it one way or another, yes, sir. And I need that, and we need the variance, too.
With, with that, I'll move. Can you have anything on this case? Okay, thank you. Motion and second to approve the variance to TE three, cast your votes. That is approved. Move application? Do you want to have a, a TE that says if the traffic, if the traffic department doesn't, if the traffic department does require stop signs, that the applicant will apply for them at the traffic commission?
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 16 as conditioned, cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
I don't know if Janice's light was on for the variance, but she obviously didn't participate in that vote. Thanks.
It was off, we had it off.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thanks.
Item 17, 18, and 19 were continued or withdrawn. Item 20 is CPA 2017, number three, for a map amendment to the land use typology area northwest of Southeast 74th and Soonah Road, removing heavy industrial land use and designating the area urban low intensity. And with that, Ken Bryan is here to do a presentation for the comp plan amendment.
Thank you. Ken Bryan, Planning Department. So this is... So this is the third comp plan amendment for the year, and I'm going to just kind of walk through some of the key items from the staff report and talk about Plan OKC to the extent possible. So the request was to remove the heavy industrial layer and leave the urban low intensity land use topology area in place. And there's an associated P U D as well to change the, change the zoning, that, I believe that's the next item. Okay, so to just orient to where we are, here's our land use topology map, our Luda map. The red star there, just to the west of Tinker, shows the area that we'll be discussing in Here's a site map with an aerial showing the, showing the site itself. So it's approximately, the entire site's about 80 acres. You can tell there's a drainage here on the eastern portion of the site, about 50 acres of it are, are developable as outside the flood plain or the flood zone. Looking at the existing conditions as far as Ludas go, so the, the heavy industrial topology layer is designed to concentrate industrial uses and especially ones that are difficult to integrate because of heavy traffic, odors, noise, dust, those type of things. So it's sort of the, the layer that we need for kind of the, the dirty areas of, of development that make a lot of dust, may have some noise, things like the landfill that's, that's a couple of miles to the west. There's a concrete plant adjacent to this site. There may be car crushing facilities or things like that that are appropriate for the, this HI layer. Attributes associated with heavy industrial also include easy access to the highway system and direct access to rail infrastructure. Wherever we can find those, that's a good indicator of, of heavy industrial uses. Of course, the urban low intensity sits underneath this. Those are the, the least intensely developed areas of Oklahoma City, and so we're familiar with the policies associated with urban low. We deal with those a lot, and you guys hear about those frequently. So I alluded a little bit to the detailed land use. So taking, taking a look here at the site, there's a concrete manufacturing facility over to the west. I believe it's operated by DeLisi. There's an asphalt recycling facility just to the northwest. These are, and so these are locations that don't have large buildings. They may have just like simple office building, a very small structure for just monitoring traffic in and out, but a lot of outdoor storage of, of raw materials and then finished product that may, both of which may go in or out on the rail line or using the access to I-240 here. There's an oil and gas research facility, a pipe manufacturing facility, and so a, a lot of uses that are completely appropriate and informed our, our decisions about the heavy industrial layer in this area. There's some retail at the corner of 74th and Sooner. I believe there's a gas station and maybe a Sonic and some things like that, but supportive retail. Of course, as you move to the east, there's a residential subdivision. That is not covered by the heavy industrial layer, nor is the church just to the north of that. And I believe the heavy industrial boundary is, is along 240 or the rail line, so the, the uses to the south, the hospital there and additional residential would also, they wouldn't be under the, the heavy industrial. So we'd like to take a look at our major city services as well. The site's in the urbanized area, so it has direct access to water, sewer, and urban response times for Oklahoma City Fire Department. Last bullet on existing conditions, the transportation network. So you can see here the rail line known as the Flynn Spur. And according to BNSF, that's the owner and operator of the, that, that particular spur, they consider that branch to be the most viable for new rail development in Oklahoma City. So that was a key component to this analysis and the, the consideration for the plan. So taking a look at how we assigned Ludas, particularly to this area, of course, I've referenced the direct access to the rail line, immediate access to the interstate system, the existing zoning is I-2, presence of other heavy industrial uses, which I've, I've shown, and then, of course, economic benefits regarding rail-served sites. So we have supporting studies that informed portions of, of Plan OKC. You might be familiar with the Employment Lands Needs Assessment and Action Plan. That, now that, this site wasn't specifically identified or called out, didn't make the top 10 list, so to speak, in that study, but this site is, meets a lot of the qualifications that were identified as having economic benefit to our community in that study. So we'd like to also consider the, the land supply, and what we mean by that is, is there enough available land for the, the type of development proposed? And then the other side of that, is there, is, is the land use they're proposing to change? Is there plenty of that in, in other areas of the city or in the immediate area? So we're going to focus in here on these undeveloped sites that are served by the Flynn Spur, and of course, there's, there's not very many. This area is a little bit, is pretty developed out, but that, that site we're looking at is kind of the last major undeveloped site along that spur. Then taking a look at the other side of land supply, which is other places where there would be, do we have enough land supply for the proposed use? In this case, it's a multifamily housing complex. And so we, we looked at areas that they're very interested in, the employment centers associated with not just Tinker Air Force Base, but the supporting employment areas around Tinker. So we took a look at undeveloped parcels that are greater, larger than 10 acres, that are already in the urban low intensity area, so wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily need a comp plan amendment. And you can see them here highlighted on the map, there's, there's more than 1,000 acres of those types of sites. If you're, if you'll grant some liberty and allow us to talk about additional jurisdictions, there appear to be several thousand more, a few thousand more in nearby jurisdictions. There's also lots of redevelopment opportunity in this area. Of course, I haven't talked about the employment reserve site. You can see it there in the bottom left corner of this map. That's about 600 acres. That was identified in our, in the employment land study. The ER overlay allows residential use as part of a, of a master planned employment center. So it's not included in the, in the 1,000-plus acres in this analysis, but maybe it's just worth mentioning. So the findings and recommendations from staff's perspective. So we noted the, the policies from Plan OKC related to heavy industrial activity. Of course, this site is completely appropriate for that type of activity. There's a desire to protect, the reason that overlay exists is protecting nearby uses from potentially negative impacts associated with those that you often see with heavy The value of rail-served sites and just the, the relative scarcity of those sites, especially in this area of town. The, again, the site is the largest undeveloped site in southeast Oklahoma City. There appear to be sufficient urban low land supply in the nearby area, and the prevailing development pattern continues to support heavy industrial in this area. So staff's recommendation is that the application to amend the map be denied and that the HI and UL Luda remain in place.
Any questions of Ken before we hear from David?
I have a question. When I met with the applicant, one of the points that they made was that this particular piece of property is just really not suited to industrial development due to pipelines that are on the property, as well as the cost of building across the substantial drainage way on the eastern side. Was any of that part of your calculation in, in looking at the property?
Yes, of course. The, and so while the site may not be appropriate for like a office complex or an R and D facility that has a large building that you may think of as an industrial use, the surrounding uses are a lot of like lay-down yards and outside storage of raw materials and finished products. I'm not sure if the issue of the easement would, of all the pipeline easements, and they're going to talk about that, I'm sure, would affect that type of use. And then as, as far as the, as far as bridging the, the creek, that really didn't play into our analysis for the, the comp plan amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Ken, thank you. We'll hear from David, and we'll may, may call you back.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I've got a host of people to introduce. With me today is Mr. Dick Tannenbaum, Cindy Murillo, Eric Gummerson, all of which are with Mr. Tannenbaum's office, Brett Price with Newmark, B.J. Hawkins with TEC, performed a traffic study on this site, and Gary Nolan, who's a civil engineer on this site. Hope I've got that in position where everybody can see it. One of the things that struck me during his presentation is he made the, the point that this is the, the last major undeveloped site in this corridor, and there's good reason for that. It's because it can't develop with heavy industrial. What this, this map shows with all the color and all the, the busyness is two substantial pipelines that crisscross the site that limit the ability. Mr. Hensley, can you see? Okay. So you've got two substantial pipelines that are in perpetual easements that are active. One is a high-pressure gas pipeline. They're not going away. Therefore, you cannot build over them. You can cross them with a, with a street. You could turn it into green space, which is what we propose in, in the P U D that'll come next, but you can't build over it, okay? And in order to get to the site, we have to cross that creek three separate times. That means three huge box culverts. On a conservative estimate, you're looking at over $1 million just to get back to the site. And then once you get back to the site, you have 30 acres that are in the flood plain and floodway. So you're now down to 50 acres, a good chunk of which is in these perpetual easements that won't allow any building to build, to be built on top of it. So you're limited to a very small building. The reason this is sat vacant for so long is because the economics aren't there. The economics have to be accounted for when we're looking at what type of land use is appropriate. And what I will submit to you, and what you'll hear from everyone else, is there is plenty of available industrial land. In fact, Mr. Tannenbaum has 80 acres just immediately east of here that sat vacant for a decade. He'd be thrilled, I'm guessing, if somebody wanted to come develop heavy industrial. It's just not there, the market's not there. But specifically on this site, the market's not there. And the reason is, it costs too much to get there, and once you're there, you cannot build a building big enough to justify the economics, and then the demand is not there. So I, I do want Mr. Tannenbaum to come, introduce himself briefly and explain his role in this city. He's had a huge impact in development of industrial land all over the city. He's an industrial developer. And if he can look at this site with all the encumbrances and, and tell you that it can't be developed industrially, I would submit to you that it cannot. So I'd be happy to answer any questions now, or I can turn it over to the rest of the folks that wish to speak, and then address any questions after.
Commissioners?
Richard Tannenbaum, 131 Park Avenue. I'm a downtowner, love it. I am a industrial developer, real estate developer. I also do multifamily, and I do single-family residential, which we did in this area. We have built the Boeing Complex, Northrup, and several aerospace companies, and we also built Liberty Trails, which is right across the street, 267 single-family homes. We also built Liberty Point at Air Depot in 240, which is 200, 324 apartments, to satisfy this huge demand that is at Tinker and the surrounding support companies that do the engineering for all the touch labor that occurs at Tinker. So I'm very familiar with this area. I've owned land in that whole area since 1997, '98, and we feel that what's happening at Burlington Northern Yard, which is now Tinker Air Force Base, where they're building hangars for the new long-range tanker, refueling tanker, there's going to be somewhere between 3,000 to 5,000 new jobs coming in the next three to five years. So we looked in the area for a upscale community with great amenities and satisfy the need of probably the highest per capita income aerospace workers that are coming to Tinker and the supporting companies in the area. So we came across this property, and as you can see, there are several residential developments all around there. If you go up and down Sooner, it's all retail now. Neighborhood Walmart just opened, there's two on queues within a mile of each other. They're, they're building a new IMAX theater. The whole area has totally changed to, to support and, and help the Tinker Air Force Base, which I was just in the Chamber of Commerce DC flying in DC, and all the four-star generals and Senator Inhofe, they're very proud of our community supporting Tinker. So we are a profit-making organization. I'm not doing this for the heck of it, but we're spending $80 million to build 490 homes. We've done our traffic study, we've done our soil tests. The pipelines that exist will be handled with green areas, and you can cross them with, you know, porous asphalt-type things. And we very much want to proceed and get, get this thing rezoned, because it'll never be industrial. One last comment, there's probably, the last industrial development out there was at least six or seven years ago. I do own 80 acres at 59 and Air Depot that was residential, and I rezoned it back to industrial, and we haven't, we put out a lot of RFPs, but that's not what's coming to Tinker. What's coming to Tinker is to support Tinker worker with retail, with homes, with multifamily. These are rental that we're doing, but there's also single-family development. There's 3,000 homes in that area. So I think it's changed dramatically, and we're site-specific. We're not looking at the overall master plan, which I appreciate what staff has done and what the city council and planning and zoning has done as far as industrial. I'm an industrial developer. This will never be developed as industrial land, whether it's a pipe yard, gravel, whatever. And as far as the neighbors, there, there's a 250-unit development right across the street called the Landing that's getting ready to open. So the whole area has changed dramatically. That's basically my pitch, and we'd like your consideration on the rezoning, which is the only way I think this property will ever develop.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Are you concerned about the DeLisi concrete plant that's right to the east?
I'm not personally. I met with Mark this morning.
You think that your tenants would be concerned about a concrete plant? And I don't know what, I don't know what it produces, I don't know what deft or noise or anything like that, but I just have that letter in our packet...
Right.
...that the DeLisi, and I didn't realize that this is a concrete plant just, just next door.
Right. There's batch plants all over the city next to residential areas, but specifically, DeLisi is there, they've been there for a long time. There's residential all around it, there's the hospital right across the street, there's this landing that I referred to. I'm not going to spend this kind of money, capital investment, debt, equity, and everything else, not to rent these properties. So we are building a berm, it's about a seven, eight-foot berm and the tree, so with the tree planting and everything, like we did at Liberty Trails, the 267 homes right across the street on Sooner, on the rail, we built the berm, we built the trees. So there's about a 20-foot barrier that they won't see it. As far as dust flying around, you know, there's dust flying around all over that area, and they need to be concerned about the hospital, the landings, Liberty Trails, Liberty Point, all of the retail in the area. And I've been developing out there since '97, and I don't see any big dust or anything else. And I saw Mr. DeLisi at the Chamber Board meeting this morning. I thought the letter was very well done. He's just making everyone aware, but he wasn't protesting heavily. They're not here. And he said, hey, I thought I, I was going to see you today. I'm sorry. I said, no, 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 that's fine. You need to make your position, just like staff just made their position about their overall plan. We're site-specific. I don't have any concerns about them being our neighbor. Excuse me.
One final thing I'd like to, to have is I'd like Mr. Price to come up and, and visit briefly about the available land supply. One of the big things that the city's always worried about is maintaining adequate industrial land. We certainly wouldn't want to get rid of industrial land that would put the city at a disadvantage in our... want to get rid of industrial land. It would put the city at a disadvantage. And our, our hope is that once you listen, uh, to him, you're going to feel comfort that this application is not going to have any impact on the city's ability to attract, uh, large users.
Give us your name and address, please.
Brett Price, 511 North Dewey.
And you represent, or what?
Newmark Rudd, commercial real estate broker with Newmark Rudd.
Thank you. That's why I needed to know.
Um, you know, I can talk about the land that's available in the area. I personally have two listings that total 101 acres within two miles of this property. Um, I've had the listings longer than I like to admit. Um, just from, you know, day-to-day dealings, there's just not that much industrial demand in this submarket. It's always been our laggard submarket. Um, we did a, we just ran a search and there's 29, uh, properties available for sale or for lease. There's also 39 undeveloped parcels ranging, ranging in acres from, uh, acre and a half to 85 acres. And that's just industry. Um, I alone represent property owners who have 225,000 square feet of vacant space in this submarket. And again, it's been vacant for longer than I like to admit. So, you know, from the viability as an industrial submarket, it's, it's not one of our better submarkets. And the demand's just not there today.
Okay.
I can answer any questions anybody has about the industrial submarket over there.
Ken, go ahead. Do you have a comment or a?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make a quick, uh, point of clarification. Uh, when we talk about land supply for the heavy industrial layer, um, it's a little bit different than the other Luda types in Oklahoma City because we don't anticipate being able to add any more heavy industrial overlay. So that's different than like the urban low Luda where we imagine that the facilities and infrastructure will expand and there'll be additional, um, areas for urbanization. So, um, the HI layer's pretty unique and has a very, you know, it's got a very long-term, uh, life cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just in closing, you know, one of the things that, that Mr. Tannenbaum has consistently said to me is one of the reasons why this area hasn't developed, um, with the heavy industrial is because it's inferior highway access. I mean, the big guys want to be on I-40 and they want to be on I-35. 240 doesn't really get you anywhere. It only gets you to a point where then you can get to where the people want to be. So that is why it's, it's an inferior submarket. And then when you add in all the limitations that this site-specific location has, it, it leads us to the conclusion that the heavy industrial layer, while it looks good on the plan because we need to have an adequate supply, when you dig into the details of the site, which we must do, um, it, it just doesn't pass the test. And, and it's, it's no fault of the plan. I mean, the plan looks at things from a 30,000, uh, you know, foot view. It's not till we're ready to potentially develop a site that you start digging into the details of that site. But once you dig in, it becomes clear real fast why this is sat vacant for so long. Why is the last major undeveloped site? Because it can't develop with heavy industrial. So we would ask that you approve our application to remove the HI layer and allow this to be ULI.
Something else, Dick?
Yeah, I, I just want to point out one other, about the heavy industrial. Uh, like I said, that whole area's changed. It's not like it was five, 10, 15 years ago. Also, this is the piece of dirt. That's our only entrance. The rest of the land, we don't own. And even if we did, you still have to cross the creek. We're designing it to city code. We've spent some money with traffic. We spent signalization money. We spent, I mean, as far as studying it. We have our, uh, Smith Roberts engineer on the huge box culvert to cross it. Besides the cost, at the end of the day, that is not a truck traffic entrance. That's a, a car entrance, a residential entrance. Uh, ultimately, any developer, any potential user or tenant is going to need trucks for industrial, heavy trucks. Eventually, uh, I couldn't sell that. I couldn't let, uh, guys that I want as a tenant are, are going to say, that's the only way we're going to get across on trucks. Eventually, we're going to wear it out. And like I said, it'll be built very well to city code. It'll have curbs. It's wide enough for three lanes of cars, not for heavy industrial trucks. That was my only last point. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tannenbaum, you do own a strip of land on the south side of your property going out to 74th, isn't that correct?
That is the, uh, exit, uh, there is an exit. We don't own it, but there's an exit.
Okay, you're, it's showing as, as, as an ownership on, on the, uh, the plat. Or on, on, on our information, I, maybe I should say.
An easement. There's an easement there, but we don't own it.
You don't own it, but there is a road easement there.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. As an emergency exit, yes, sir, there sure is.
Anything else, Commissioners?
No, I'm pretty well convinced that the property can't be used for industrial. And, um, I've sat down with David and Mr. Tannenbaum for, um, well, on, on the telephone for a while. Um, and with the presentation that we just heard, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the application.
Let me make a comment before I second that motion. Uh, I am a substantial advocate for preservation of industrial land. And I think that it's, uh, an obligation of the planning department, the planning commission, the planning department to defend industrial land wherever it is, and I respect the position that is taken. Uh, but this particular piece of property crisscrossed by high-pressure gas lines. You have an entrance area that, that goes, what, quarter of a mile over creeks, et cetera, that has to be supportive of large trucks. Uh, I'm convinced after, Jim, after talking to Mr. Tannenbaum and, and Mr. Box, uh, that they've convinced me that this isn't one of those things that I really want to fight for. I think it's, you know, it's, it's in the category of it shouldn't be there. It shouldn't be heavy industrial. It should be urban. And so the second thing that I'm jealous of is preserving what we did with the comprehensive plan. Uh, there has to be really, really significant, strong, giant reasons to modify what we did in putting that plan together. But for both of those reasons, this is one of those that doesn't fit within that box. And so I second Jim's motion. Before we go any further, um, we might consider extending the plan amendment east of Sooner Road.
Usually what staff does when, when we receive an application to rezone, the applicant has requested the comp plan amendment for the property that they will be developing. Staff's analysis can look beyond that. So if this area is considered appropriate for urban development, we probably need to consider the continuous contiguous piece of HI that would remain between the eastern property line of Mr. Tannenbaum's development and Sooner Road because those parcels are relatively small. They are consisting of low-impact industrial and retail and commercial development. It's probably not feasible for them to be developed as heavy industrial, and it would help us not have an island of urban low in the middle of a heavy industrial boundary. So if the planning commission is going to consider doing that, I would, I would recommend that we modify the boundary.
Uh, we certainly don't have any problem with that.
Would you want that to go to the south too and not leave that little, not leave a strip of, maybe I can.
Yeah.
Navigate my way to that.
If you could pull up the aerial.
Let's not get too much away.
Here, we can see that the, the land to the south to the interstate is already partially developed. And then the portion that, if you go to the aerial, Ken, you can see it better.
It's all creek.
The portion to the south is within the floodplain and then a portion to the southwest of it is already developed. So heavy industrial uses, um, being designated in that strip is probably not feasible to be developed there as well. So if we wanted to square that corner up as urban low, I would suggest that we modify the boundary.
So take it from the north side of the developed southeast corner over to Sooner Road and then north and then a direct east extension of the north line.
Well, just curiously, I mean, I, we do urban low if you're, I mean, you're going to, you're on an arterial there, what effectively will be an arterial. If it's not already, it's Sooner Road. Wouldn't we realistically expect that to develop commercial? So they'd have to come in to rezone that later on, and then they'd have to come in to rezone the, anything along the service road there at 74th because that, I mean, I don't see anybody, I don't think you're going to build houses out there, Dick. I'm not trying to go monk, I, I mean, I get everybody's point about we, we don't want an orphan strip there on both sides, but I don't know what that impact is on what might be developable along Sooner to the north and 74th back to the west.
We're fine either way. We only own, you know.
Yeah, I know. You guys don't care. Yeah.
And, and I think to the south, as you mentioned, the, the spot that remains HI to the south, frankly, is all creek and trees. I don't really think you could ever develop it anyways.
Okay.
So in, in terms of the action for today, I think what we need to do is a recommendation to modify the boundary to extend it so that we can go back and publish notice that that boundary would be changed. Does it require public notice? There is, letting me know.
We'd like our approval and we, I mean.
Yeah.
Land that we don't own.
David, David, what I was going to say is why, why don't you instruct staff to look at the area and you'll just, I want you to expect a second comp plan amendment that would be whatever that balance is that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm just throwing that out. We don't want to extend that. We, we need to give notice and do all the appropriate things. So for this, we're going to vote on this application. Thanks. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the plan amendment. Cast your votes.
No.
It is approved.
The P U D.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the accompanying, uh, P U D. P U D 1643 to rezone 6929 South Sooner Road from I-2 to P U D 1643. If you'll note, your staff report recommendation has two options based on the decision that was made for the comp plan amendment.
Again, for the record, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. All the same folks that were here five minutes ago are still here, have not left the room. Um, so one of the, the major problems we had for industrial were the pipelines. So what you have before you is the site plan and what is a, a big hindrance to industrial development becomes a wonderful opportunity for residential development. So what you can do within those areas are walkways, open space, common area. So what you have is a, that's kind of tilted, but you have a nice cross-section through the middle of this development where there will be multiple clubhouses. You can see two pools on this site plan. That creates a, a nice walkable, open environment. What Mr. Tannenbaum is seeking to do here is to not develop your, your typical apartment, but rather, uh, townhomes. As he mentioned, these are, we've got a lot of folks out here that are high-income earners, but they're here for two to five years. You know, they're, they're here on contracts and they're, they're typically not motivated to buy a home, but they still want to have all the nice amenities that they might enjoy in a home. So what you see before you is a, a series of different renderings of a townhome. You know, each unit will have a, an interior garage, um, and they look more like homes than apartments. And that's the goal here is to provide homes for the people that are going to be working, uh, in, in this area. Um, we have an anticipation of 490 units. The P U D has a, a max of 500. Um, we believe it's going to be a wonderful opportunity with the land as is. And as Mr. Tannenbaum said, he's familiar with how to, how to screen because he developed that neighborhood to the east. So with berming and trees, we have a, an opportunity to, um, limit any potential problem. I would like to address the TEs, which are found on page 14. Um, on the technical evaluations, which is B, Sub B, um, we're okay with one, uh, two, number three, we can't agree to. Proposed access along Sooner Road must line up with Southeast 67th Street. Um, we do not own the dirt that would allow us to line up with Southeast 67th Street. Uh, but Mr. Hawkins with T E C is here. He did perform a traffic study, uh, for this site and he can, he can explain to you why with the installation of signal, which my client is willing to pay for himself, uh, and appropriate phasing, that the intersection will work just fine and there will not be problems created. But again, we don't own the dirt where you could line up exactly. So we've lined up as, as good as we could and what you'll hear from BJ is that the study shows it will operate, uh, just fine. Uh, TE five, a specific plan shall be required. We've included our elevations and fairly detailed, um, analysis in our, in our PUD. We'd ask that the specific plan be eliminated because we do feel like we provide enough detail upfront at this hearing to, to avoid that and come back for a second hearing. Uh, but we do agree with, um, yeah, and number six, we can't agree to. Um, it may end up being that that's the, the exact number, but we're going to berm it. We're going to tree it. Um, we don't know the exact location of each building yet, but, um, we feel that we're going to be able to buffer the, the site appropriately. So.
I would prefer to see a specific plan. I mean, I, I think that the amount of detail you provided is great, but I, and so you can touch us again, but I'd like to see a specific plan. And I think that's, uh, appropriate for staff to request that as technical evaluation.
Okay. Uh, we can live with that. So TE number five is fine. So the issues are TE three and TE six.
What's the deal on six?
And TE six can frankly be addressed at the specific plan. Um.
Okay, so we would leave that then. And you want it, if you didn't want it at the specific plan stage, you could ask for it to go away then. I don't, I don't get why we want to get rid of it now when, when, when we're going to get.
That's fine.
Okay.
50 foot setback from the industrial use.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So we're good with all but three.
Okay.
David, what are the chances of making a little dirt trade and, uh, moving that access north 50 feet to a line? Is there any chance of, I mean, just same amount of square footage of dirt, only just move it?
We've tried. Um.
I thought you could talk somebody into anything.
But, but we've tried. Um, but, and that's why Mr. Tannenbaum decided to do a traffic study upfront. He wanted to make sure that.
I, I understand. I, I get the message. So we'll hear from your traffic guy.
This is new, Dick Tannenbaum, 131 Park Avenue. Uh, these offset signalizations, they're, they're all over the city. In fact, there's one mile and a half down the street on 44th. And it works like a charm.
Which the city's about to try and spend bond money to, uh, repair or change. But that's neither here nor there.
Um, this is, you know, I, I'm concerned about my guys getting in and out and I'm willing to pay for, uh, pretty expensive signalization and, and the right kind of road to make that happen. And it's, by the way, I built the exit that we're offsetting and there's no signalization. And there's 267 homes that have more residents than apartments generally. Uh, and that's who we would be helping get in and out. Uh, we even helping my old neighborhood and I sold those homes. Those were not rentals. So I feel good about that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions? Your name and address, please.
BJ Hawkins, traffic engineering consultant, 6000 Southwestern Avenue. Um, I conducted the traffic study on the development and like they were saying, there's no, we, I recommended trying to align the street with Southeast 67th, but, uh, the landowner would not work with them. So I also analyzed the intersection as offset and it's approximately 50 feet from the center of 67th Street to the Development Drive. I analyzed it as stopping outside of the both streets and the east-west operating at split phase. So they're going to come on it one at a time. So there's no conflicts turning left and right. Everything showed that it could operate fine. It's not ideal, but it's a solution that will also provide access onto Sooner Road for this development as well as those existing 267 homes on the other side. So as Sooner just continues to grow and grow and grow, there's no, you know, easy way for them to get in and out. And there's, um, I mean, there's no signals in between Sooner, uh, the 74th and 59th. So the spacing, no spacing issues or anything. So.
So how would you signalize it and where at? I mean, you've, you've got these two streets.
Both, entire intersection would operate as one with drives just being offset. Sooner would stop outside for southbound, all, outside of 67th Street for northbound, outside of the Development Drive. And it would just make a little longer drive than a normal typical intersection. Kind of more of an oval than just a squared up intersection.
And this would be signalized as I understand it?
Correct. Yes. Every leg would have a signal.
How would you, how do you do that?
Like I said.
To phase the traffic in from.
So it would always revert back to north-south on Sooner. And then when there was a call on either the side streets, say there were, on both sides, it was oper, there was calls there. One would go, say the westbound would go, it would have the right-left while the eastbound was stopped. Then that would stop and then the westbound would go, then back to Sooner.
Okay.
The side streets would have minimal time. It would always go back to Sooner. So.
In, in your study, does it, there's, there's nothing, um, point to having an access out the south of this property, uh, egress and ingress?
It's just an emergency access. That was.
Okay, but could that be an ingress and egress rather than just an emergency?
I don't think that.
I, I am, you know, I, I respect you as, as a traffic engineer, but I, I think there's a practical part of the side of this whole thing. I have seen. part of the side of this whole thing. I have seen Sooner Road backed up all the way to Forty-fourth and beyond. I've seen it backed up all the way to Eighty-ninth and beyond. And that's not just in the mornings. In the evenings, that's, you know, at times, places of the church to the northeast of there, when there's a lot of traffic out of that church. There is other things that go on in that area that I am really concerned with the practical side of that, not having some other traffic egressing, ingress to that piece of property. And I think that would alleviate a lot of the problems that could happen. And again, I'm not a traffic and safety engineer by the, you know, by the long shot, but I have seen it. I don't think that we can add a whole heck, you know, a possibility of another thousand cars out on Sooner Road during, you know, during the rush hours, either way, going to work or coming home from work. I think we're really gonna create a problem if we don't have that access out the south. And I know there's, I know there's a problem going across the railroad track. But in conversation with Mr. Tannenbaum and David, they were willing to look at that possibility and I asked them to do that. And I'm gonna tell you, I cannot support this application without it.
An additional drive would definitely help, you know, disperse the traffic and alleviate some of the congestion on Sooner. I did analyze the development with two drives. They would still operate at level service F, the side streets, which is not uncommon for, you know, side streets on a heavy arterial, but it would, you know, help disperse two, two separate arterials which, like you said, could help, definitely.
And to that point, I mean, what our commitment is, we will make inquiry. I mean, dealing with railroad, you know, it takes time, but we're confident that the study, even with the one, it's gonna work. But as we move forward, we're gonna make that inquiry and see if we can make that happen.
Can we have, that is the TE?
That is required?
Yes.
No, because if the railroad comes back and says no.
Then you gotta come back.
Then we gotta come back where?
Then you would have to come back in that correct, if the railroad denies it?
Well, and because we don't know how long it'll take and what they're gonna say, we're not willing to condition the approval on the second access because we're confident with the study that with phased signalization, that it will work. But we're willing to go see if we can have a second access to alleviate additional concerns, but we can't condition approval on this, on that.
Well.
Just one comment. With that signalization, it helps Sooner Road. Cause they're backing up from the railroad when they, first of all, that rail is dead. They don't even go to the yard that they, that's now Tinker. But with the signalization, it helps the traffic flow on Sooner. The problem is across Seventy-Fourth where the hospital is, they didn't do signalization.
We, and as you well know, Mr. Tannenbaum, we have to do traffic control out of our church on Sunday morning or any event at that church. We have to do traffic control in front of our church and we have to pay for it. You know, the, that traffic on Sooner Road is, at times, and I mean, times daily, is a problem. We caused ourselves a problem. Part of it on south of there, on south of Two Forty, you know, we didn't get an easement for the hospital. You know, that, that road goes in front of the hospital, is owned by the hospital. We don't have an easement there. We don't have a stop sign there. That hospital is, since it's been there, it's been added on three times and they're getting ready to add on the fourth time. So that's gonna be a whole lot more traffic from that hospital as well.
That's why we have the signalization. That solves the problem. It really does. Thank you.
And to that point, what our study analyzed is full buildout under the absolute maximum we could do, you know. So there isn't the scenario you're talking about, that additional add-ons that create unanticipated traffic from our site. So we're confident with full buildout of our site with the adding a signal that's not there, it's gonna help the entirety of Sooner Road and help the folks that live east of Sooner that have no protection now. So, I mean, what we can commit to is we're gonna continue to work for that, but we can't condition the approval on it because dealing with railroads, there's a bit of uncertainty in timing and what they're gonna say, but we're gonna try to do.
Okay. The car yard that was real active when the GM plant was, I understand Tinker owns that, isn't that what you told me, Mr. Tannenbaum?
Rail yard.
Okay, so that, that traffic on east of Sooner is gonna be alleviated to some degree except with trains going to Tinker. Isn't that correct?
I think the rail yard's dead.
Yeah.
The old Burlington Northern Rail Yard is now Tinker Air Force Base.
Uh huh.
The trains don't go there anymore. There's no reason. As a matter of fact, on one of the lines, there's a, what do you, what do you call it? A derail which stops the train. They just don't go east of our west property line, period. The trains are gone.
Okay. So the only portion of the railroad track actually would be to the west of the lumberyard there on the north side of the railroad track.
That's correct. They supply Repro Graphics. I think that's their only customer. And then they back back up.
I don't know what kind of experience, you know, I don't have any experience of trying to cross a railroad track, but I know that that would alleviate the, most of the traffic on that railroad with no traffic going east of Sooner.
I agree and we're, we've been trying for, I think, three months now just to confirm the emergency exit and any plan, it could be years with them. The signalization works. Air Depot, you're right. There's a lot of development over there at the, at the old rail yard, which is now Tinker Air Force Base. They're building hangars. They're employing people for the Boeing long-range fuel tanker. With the signalization, I believe it helped, our development will be in and out pretty good and it helps the traffic on Sooner, Forty-fourth, Fifty-ninth, and certainly Liberty Trails across the, across the street.
I, I still have to say I cannot support it without that.
I hear you.
We need to go.
Other questions or discussion or?
I don't think we're gonna get any more meaningful information. Frankly, I have other places I need to be this afternoon. I just, no offense to anybody in the building, but I'm just saying, let's, let's go ahead and vote. Jimmy's expressed his opinions and I don't, I don't have any comments. Bob?
Anybody? A motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve minus TE three, number, case number twenty-one. Cast your votes. It is approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Just due respect to Mr. Groves, this is a substantial period of time, frankly. I have a hard stop here this afternoon that is twenty minutes. So Ken, for me personally, I don't wanna, Eric, I don't wanna limit your presentation. I'm just giving you that heads up. So everybody that's presenting, if, if you want me to be present, I'm just telling you when I'm leaving.
Well, I definitely want you to be present.
Item number twenty-two, CPA two thousand seventeen, number two, map amendment to change the land use topology and Northwest Fiftieth and John Kilpatrick Turnpike from agricultural preserve and rural low to urban low intensity.
Ken Bryan, Oklahoma City Planning Department. So I have a short presentation that I'll move through expeditiously to kinda walk through some of the critical items of the staff report. The request, I think, was clearly stated in the introduction of the item and there's associated PUD. So this is our site location, not our site location map, our kinda LUDA map that shows where we're gonna be talking about. So we're north of Lake Overholser and just east of the Kilpatrick Turnpike. So there's a site map that also shows existing land use conditions. The site's about thirty-four acres in size. It abuts Northwest Fiftieth Street and the Kilpatrick Turnpike doesn't have access to the turnpike. The current land use is, I guess it's undeveloped, there's an active oil and gas facility on the site as well. Nearby land uses, you can tell here, there's a variety of active agricultural uses. There's subdivision across the turnpike. Of course, the lakefront development further on to the south of Route sixty-six. So here we, here's the, the LUDA map for this area, land use topology areas. Again, we're, we're looking at another overlay. So agricultural preserve is an overlay that's associated with land that's appropriate for agricultural activity on a fairly large scale. Those, a couple of, we'll go over a couple of components that we, that we looked at when we assigned this layer to mostly over the top of rural low. So that's the underlying land use, or that's the other guy in LUDA for agricultural preserve. Looking at expanding services to serve this area, it looks fairly efficient to expand both the water and the wastewater system to this area. Fire, fire has difficulty getting to this area, so it falls outside the rural response time target and that's, that's because of the, the road network's a little bit disconnected, the turnpike's kind of in the way, the lake, stench gum, things like that. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, let, let me interrupt for just a minute. We may be able to save time. Eric, are you willing to just agree that we can amend the plan and, or, because you're gonna lose Mike here pretty fast.
Yes, I have two things in response to that, Mr. Chairman. By the way, for the record, Eric Groves, attorney, thirty-six oh one North Classon. The comprehensive plan provides that commercial and industrial activities are permitted in this agricultural preserve LUDA so long as it does not negatively impact agricultural operations. You know, so I mean, you could, you could approve it just on that. I mean, I'm agreeable to amend the plan as we've requested and move on to the PUD and the plat.
The plan amendment is actually to take it from rural low intensity to urban.
It's fine.
And it cannot be developed as rural if it's going to be provided urban services and commercial uses. So that's really the plan amendment that we would be.
Okay, you lost me on that.
You have two land use topologies. Rural low is the base. Agricultural preserve is over that. Rural low is really the sticking point. For the development that you're proposing, it would be urban, which is what your plan amendment is.
We understood it was a UL base.
Correct. No.
But you say it's not.
It's rural. It's rural.
Okay. Well, then we'd wanna remove that too.
Right. And that's what your plan amendment is asking for.
Fine. We are willing to agree that the plan be amended to lift the AP LUDA and the underlying LUDA.
That seems to be what, what we want, is it not, Ken?
I believe that's the nature of the request.
Well, that way we.
Staff is not necessarily a hundred percent on board, but we can go into those details if you want.
Well, I might just get Commissioner Hensley's vote. I don't know, but I might if I've got it. I'd put him to leave.
I'm, I'm, I generally am fine with this amendment just as a matter of fact.
And I didn't mean to cut off Ken's presentation.
I don't wanna cut off Ken.
But I could see the argument coming the other way for another ten or fifteen minutes and Mike's gone.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sorry.
Well, someone would move it and I'd be delighted.
I'll move it.
Good.
Was there a point?
Well, I can tell you about the fire, but I'll wait. We're fine with the fire. That's another story. But yeah, we are not in the situation Mr. Bryan says we are.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? A second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-two. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go on to item twenty-three.
And item twenty-three is the accompanying rezoning to PUD sixteen forty-one at ten thousand four Northwest Fiftieth Street.
Just so the commission will know about the fire situation, it's kind of interesting. The fire services map that may be used in cases such as this, and I think Ami of you could dig that out, it does not indicate that the, the turnpike goes south of Route sixty-six, but it does. Or I, I forty or sixty-six?
I.
It goes down to southeast fifteenth, I believe.
Yeah. What happens when you go down southeast fifteenth and the fire department on southeast fifteenth, it's always a one-mile connection on the turnpike and then down to the fire department and I drove myself and it's about fifteen, thirteen, five minutes.
So for the record, I know, I'm gonna repeat it, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna repeat what my associate said and this is for the record. Station thirty-one, is it not? Yeah, okay. Ami drove from station thirty-one to the subject site in six minutes using a stopwatch. The people she interviewed at the station said they could do it in five minutes if they had lights and siren. So that's the reality of it. The map that was used on availability of fire services is not accurate and it doesn't reflect how far south the turnpike actually goes. By the way, the route that Ami used to accomplish that, she went on the turnpike at a high rate of speed.
Yeah, the turnpike goes.
Yeah.
All the way, right there.
Yeah. So that's the way the fire truck would go. Six minutes. Five if you've, you've got lights and a siren. All right, on the PUD, this is actually kind of a garden variety PUD. It's one six four one. By way of background, to the immediate south of our proposed PUD, you see PUD eight one three. This is a matter of coincidence. Back in two thousand and two, Dennis Box was representing the developer at that time. I represented the Stonebridge neighborhood to the immediate south and we negotiated a good commercial PUD, which is now eight thirteen. Has a lot of good design requirements in it. Really is in two tracks which are designated by a power line that runs north-south. The western track is track B, the eastern track is track A. Our plan is to build a road, a nice road from Highway sixty-six through PUD eight one three up into PUD one six four one. As you can see, we, we do not intend to have a connection to Northwest Fiftieth, which is also known as Wagner Road. We don't need it. We're gonna have one nice boulevard in and out. The fire department in the plat report said it'd be a good idea to have an emergency gate there, which we're willing to do, a crash gate, but we don't need access to it. Northwest Fiftieth, by the way, is a gravel road and, you know, we don't need it and, but it is available for fire trucks in an emergency.
You will need access from the east, won't you, on the turnpike service road?
I don't know about it. No, we hadn't planned on it. But our engineer, by the way, I should probably introduce our team so you'll know who they are. Jason Emmett, Cedar Creek Engineers, he'll talk to you about the details of the plat. My associate, Ami, who you all know. Susan Loveland, paralegal with McGee, and Ken McGee, the developer, right there.
Eric, to John's point, are you gonna, you're gonna have, you're not gonna have an access, I say, John says from the east, I say to the west.
That's what I meant.
Did you say to the west, John?
Yeah, I think he was referring to the west.
We don't want it.
To the service road. Are you gonna have an emergency access there or is that not required? I'm just asking.
It's not required. I suppose we could do it, but the fire department did not ask for that. They asked for a crash gate on Northwest Fiftieth, also known as Wagner Road.
Right.
Which we're willing to provide.
Eric?
Yes?
Service road.
That's what I was gonna say. I don't think there is a service road there.
I realized that after I looked at.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
Okay, where were we? So that's how we're gonna get in and out. Following this item, there's a preliminary plat that encompasses both PUDs. Jason will describe that and answer your questions. As far as conditions are concerned in the staff report, the conditions are in two parts. Approval of the amendment or not approval of the amendment. If it, the staff report says that the commission should approve no development or modification of the floodplain. Well, obviously we have to do something about the floodplain. We're gonna develop it. I'm gonna allow the engineer, Jason, to discuss the floodplain situation with you. Also, it suggests limiting commercial uses in the PUD, reduce the scale of proposed development so that it does not negatively impact agricultural operations. It's important to understand that we don't have any agricultural operations.